Still? Can you hear us still?
I can hear you, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Let's open this meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Brentz, roll call.
Mayor Bailey? Mr. Bateman?
Here.
Mr. Blair?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Ori?
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Ping?
Here.
Would someone want to move to excuse Mayor Bailey?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or, okay?
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Here tonight is, of course, our city manager, Dave Kennedy, to my right. Assistant City Director Cory Wright is here. Clerk of Council Misty Brentz, Acting City Solicitor Jeff Levine, our Sergeant at Arms, also sitting in for Sue Vanson, whose Safety Director is Lieutenant Spock, thanks for being here. And former member of Council Todd Osborne and our Finance Director Mark Medler. Thanks for the cue. I believe we have the open forum next, no one's signed up for that, so we can move to review and approval of minutes. June 28th was our last meeting. If there's any proposed revisions or questions or concerns, speak them. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. The next agenda item is a public hearing on the Duke Energy easement. I believe we'll need a motion to open a public hearing on the easement. Would someone make that?
Before we move, I just would like to state for the record that due to this project being in close proximity to my residence, I plan to abstain on legislation pending to the Duke Energy easement.
I think you can still vote on opening the...
I will also vote to open the public hearing to consider the Duke Energy easement.
There's a second?
I will second that motion.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Would anybody like to be heard on the public easement? Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an ordinance, it's a second reading of it, so that means we'll be voting on it. Dave, do you want to address it?
Yeah, we, again, this just simply had to do with, originally it was sort of brought to the forefront as Juneteenth holiday, which was this year, middle of June, we did not, the city did not recognize that. That led to some discussions between Mayor Bailey and I, who really knows a lot about this kind of matters from all over years, and we decided rather than simply pick and choose various holidays that we would do, that we would do something similar to Hamilton County, whereas we would say, city recognizes all federal holidays in lieu of two changes in terms of how the city recognizes Good Friday and how many people recognize Thanksgiving. So this will make sure that all, any future holidays are automatically, this immediately kicks into the CBA collective agreement, has provisions in it, so whatever, this will automatically go, be in effect for all the PD, for our two CBAs.
Sure. Does anybody have any comments on it?
I think this is a responsible thing to do to move us into line with keeping federal holidays and puts us in position moving forward to, to not have to pick and choose, as, as Mr. Kennedy said, you know, every time this comes around, have the same discussion, so I think it sets us up better for the future as well.
Anyone else? Does this need to then be voted on?
Yes, I need to read it.
Go ahead and read it.
Ordinance amending chapter 155.06 of the Lebanon Code of Ordinance's employment provisions, holidays.
Any further comment? Hearing none, we would ask you to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Ordinance 64 is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Resolutions, we have a Fire Station 63 roof replacement memorandum prepared by Mr. Kennedy. Do you want to go ahead and speak to it?
Yeah, and then I'll let Councilmember Ori. So Fire Station 63, as everyone knows, will be replacing, will be building a new station 63 up in East Loveland on the old Mason Emery Lodge building. Cory is just wrapping up our request for proposals. He, we did RFQs, which is we get the qualifications, Chief Huber, myself, and Cory selected three finalists, and then they'll give us formal proposals, and from that, the city will pick a firm to begin this pretty long relationship of design permitting, construction supervision, pretty much turnkey. With that in mind, Chief Huber made me aware of a roofing issue at the existing station 63. I don't know if it's just sort of my tightness, but originally I was sort of thinking, how could I stall on this a little bit, and then I realized that's not a smart move, so went over the three proposals with Chief Huber, and felt that actually in turn this would have a beneficial, beneficial to the city when we go to sell that building. It's an extremely valuable site, I need not remind you that we just paid $440,000 for an old beat-up gas station, you can just imagine, especially thanks to LSFD personnel, this building has been meticulously kept. This is one of the few buildings, when people say you could eat off the floor, you could literally eat off the floor, so why now let it go? So with that, we decided to forge ahead with the roofing replacement, and we see that it'll be something we'll advertise when this property goes out for sale, and with that, I didn't even know they really existed, but we went with the, the TPO type roof, which is the triethylene poly, oof, why can't he pronounce it? It's often called a white roof, and that will not only add to the salability of it, because it'll make the building much more energy efficient. Spoke to Councilmember Ori today, and my original legislation and proposal did not include that extended warranty, and I should have included that, it only makes sense, so I'm gonna let, so the only thing I'm saying is, what you have in front of you is a redline version, I sent it to Councilmember Blair also, but I, I think it'd be appropriate for Councilmember Ori to give you a little more information on why this is a good move for the city.
Thank you, Dave. For, one question I didn't get answered, Davis, how old do you, is the roof that's on there now, the current? You know?
I, I would be guessing, but I might be able to find out before you're done.
And the reason why I ask that is because that roof was put on over top of another roof, which it should never be done that way, but some people do, you should never put a rubber roof over top of an existing roof, so that's probably one reason why it's failed. Being in my, in the construction business for so long, I put my first white roof on in, I think, 1979, and they are extremely good, energy efficient, more energy efficient, they don't stretch as bad, they don't dry out as bad, I mean, just everything about it is good. So I looked into Paramount Commercial Roofing Systems, they've only been in business for seven years, but found a couple, several reviews, Better Business Bureau had two excellent reviews, Hills Grill Chamber of Commerce hit seven, all five-star reviews, and then, Dave already had us on some of this, so I called him this morning, he sent me to Chief Huber, who has all the proposals, and I asked him about the different warranties with the different proposals that we had, and they were all two-year. This, Paramount's the only one that gave us a price for the PVC roof versus the rubber on the other two. So I questioned about the, oh, and also talked to Chief Huber about where he got the Paramount's name, they used them several, about five years ago on the brown building, the roof over top of what's now Hobson Berries, as well, Alley Petit, so he was very pleased with the workmanship and the service. The NDL, the no-dollar amount, I was gonna make a recommendation that we, we take that.
Yeah.
For, for a couple reasons, but it, it takes, and I actually, you have in front of you, I sent, I talked to Kendrick Miller, the owner of Paramount, and he sent me the warranty and information about it, so that's something that we definitely have an advantage to ourselves to buy that, especially with the proposal of coming up, that we're gonna sell that property, because it is transferable. There are conditions, Dave and I, so make sure I call that to your attention on the back of page four, there's some conditions on, on what we have to do. The extended warranty that NDA extends it for the full 20 years, so it's work material and workmanship, and that workmanship is, is based upon the original installation, so if we get people up there walking on the roof installing the equipment, they puncture or do something, that's not warranted, so it's just the original, you know, installation that's, that's warranted, but it's still, it's a, it's a good decision to purchase with the, able to transfer. Chief Huber and I talked in length about roof preventive, preventive maintenance, and this was before I had the warranty information, but the warranty information requires that we inspect the property, the roof twice a year, and Chief was talking about how we don't get around to that, and I think we either need to put that into our budget for next year to have someone come in and do it for us, or that we get it onto our, our schedule, because every time it, we get a big storm, we get leaves, blims, who knows what lands up there, and the quicker we can get the gutters and scuffer holes cleaned out, drains cleaned, material off the roof, the better off we can be. Plus, it'd give us the opportunity to look for, you know, any leaks or potential problems. One of the problems that I've always found with this type of roofing is that when they install it, if they tuck the corners, you know, you do have corners in a roof, if they tuck them too tight, that material stretches, expands and contracts, and when it, it contracts, it splits, it can't, it can pull away from the, the, fasten to the parapet wall and all. So that'll be an important specification to, to look at, and the installer starts to put this in and make sure he knows, and I'm sure he does, he's, he's gotten great reviews, and Chief Huber said he even had him come, come back for some work on top of, of...
The brown building.
The brown building, yeah, when they, when the, Berries put the, the new vent through the roof, so, and he said they were very happy with it, so, other than that, I think everything else is, you know, it was already covered, Dave, I do suggest that we, we have some kind of a schedule for preventive maintenance twice a year going forward.
He mentioned that to me after he spoke.
Did he? Okay, good, good.
That, that portion of the roof was installed in 1972, and it was updated in 1990.
96 was the...
Updated.
Okay, good, alright, okay.
So the, the, there would be a motion to amend the resolution.
I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to the redline version we have on our desk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want to call the roll?
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Wait a minute, I, excuse me. I have a question.
Yeah, I can, we, we just moved to...
Oh, you're moving to amend it to the redline, okay.
Correct, so there'll be further discussion, can that wait?
Thank you.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Now, any comments or questions, Mr. Blair?
Yes, I share manager Kennedy's thriftiness, I guess, because I'm kind of wondering why we're replacing, why we're putting a 20-year roof on a building we're not gonna own for more than three years, that is likely, in at least 50% to be torn down when the new owner buys the property.
Well, that, that's, I, I felt, I guess my thought was that we were more likely that the building would be reutilized for commercial, and I would not anticipate that that new fire station would likely be complete until 2024, and then the sale of the property wouldn't even commence until the all operations had moved to the new station. And I thought meanwhile, we could be potentially decaying the roof structure, the, the, of the building, and then I had some early estimates on the sale of that property, which was with the building, they were very rough at around $850,000, and I thought that if the building is to be used for a commercial roof, a commercial operation, to be able to say, the roof was replaced in 2022, 2023, it has a transferable warranty, and it will, has 73% reflectivity, which will reduce your heating and cooling costs, I thought we would probably get the money back. But I gotta be honest with you, Councilmember Blair, I guess there is the potential that the building could be removed, the one thing, whether that works to the benefit or not to the benefit, anytime you're dealing with an existing, with a development inside a floodplain, most people lean towards keeping the existing building, because if the building is removed, and you're no longer to, able to do what they call substantial improvements, and the building has to be completely redone, it would then have to be elevated, it would be a very, very unattractive building, and you're right, it would likely end up being a little corner pocket park, so I sort of envisioned that it will be reutilized for commercial use, but you, you, that's why I'm, I'm not, I'm at a little bit of a loss, because I never really thought about the possibility that the building could be, you know, purchased and removed, but even then, it wouldn't be until 2024 at the earliest, the rate we're going, so, I don't...
If, if I can, if I can respond, okay, so if it's 2024, you're talking two-year, a two-year wait, i- is the roof patchable at some price less than $28,000, and if the decision is to go forward with the, with the full replacement, then we're, we're making a $28,000 bet, I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's, it's, it's like it's my money, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you're right, well...
That's, that's my only issue.
I'll, I'll defer to Neil, because he would know better than I would, but I will be honest with you, our only quotes that we received were for replacement, we didn't get any.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Ori?
Yes, the, Mr. Blair, the, the fact is that every time someone goes up there, it's probably $2,000 to $3,000 to make a patch, because it's, it's a rubber roof, and you have to, it, it's a process, it's stinky, it's, it's a mess, and people don't like to do them, and if we have three or four leaks between now and then, we're halfway there, better, yeah, but I, I'm looking at it more, and I didn't even thought about the building being torn down, because I, I just don't think that would happen. I think the building would stay just the way it is, and this would be a good asset to have a new roof, a newer roof on, you know, being sold with the property.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions, but I'll jump in on the conversation around the likelihood of the fire station being torn down, because I think, similar to Mr. Ori and Mr. Kennedy, that it's an uphill battle probably for that building to come down, given the, you know, the, the price that they will likely pay for it, and then the historic designation in the district, as well as the fact the building is going to be about 50 years old at the time of the estimated sale, so I think it will be considered sort of in the, in the, those that are making those decisions from the, the historic preservation and the zoning board as being, you know, a historic asset within the community. The questions I have are just around, is this the primary, you, you mentioned, Mr. Kennedy, that it was meticulously kept and in good shape, so can we expect any other needs for repairs during the time of waiting?
Between now and 2024, and just to piggyback a little bit on the interest in this building, Chief Huber and I recently had a discussion about the possibility, since the interest in this building has gotten to such a, a, a pretty significant pitch with us getting phone calls, we have actually considered the potential of auctioning off the right to be the first and last refusal on this property, there's been so much interest in purchasing it. I was toying with the thought of having the property transferred to our CIC, who then would have more flexibility, and just to, and there would be a price in about the range of this roof, for example, where someone, XYZ contractor, would have the option to simply be the first one at the table when the city says we're ready to sell it. So we were looking at the possibility of transferring this to the CIC and selling an option to at least say, okay, for all those that you were calling and inquiring about the building, Fred Smith is gonna have the first option to purchase this property at the price we determine it should be at, and he actually paid through a bidding process that right to do it, and because there's an interest in it, so that, that's what we're doing. As far as any other needs of the building, I don't see any, the flooring, the gutters, one of the reasons we're building the new building is that at some point in time, we would trigger and lose our grandfather status, and the elevator, how we contain the outdoor generator, all of those things now are no longer grandfathered in, and we would kick out of those, so right now, we're, we're exempt, but as soon as the building gets approved to a certain point in time, all of that is out the window, large in part why we're moving forward for that, not to mention the sheer narrowness of the, of the doorways, has broken more mirrors than anyone can imagine, not to mention that one of the reasons why we like the site that we're going to is because the whole backing up process becomes a traffic issue, being on O'Bannon, we're gonna have pull-through design, so I have no doubt that we are doing the right thing with the new station, I have no doubt that we picked the right site, but I know how government is, and I don't see us actually selling the property until sometime in 2024, that's best-case scenario.
Okay, and therefore this repair, or this replacement, I should say, is gonna make this even more desirable as a...
Energy-efficient white roof. I would only say white, because I don't half-pronounce the P and the T.
Yeah.
I went online and hit the thing where the voice tells it to you, I still don't have very, polyethylen, something like that.
Right.
So, Chief Huber made me do an aerial of picture, look at downtown Loveland, I had no idea how many people have put in white roofs.
I'm like, I didn't even know it existed.
And so my last question is really around the funding for the request, so it mentions Fire and EMS Fund, line item 24245281.
That's our, there's four different Fire and EMS funds, each has a pretty significant undesignated fund balance, it was sort of, so we, Mark and I decided on Fund 24 to take it from that, that particular fire fund's undesignated fund balance.
These are reserve funds that are from the, one of the Fire and EMS.
Yeah, that particular fund has a current balance of 286, 527, in that range, so...
Okay. Thank you, and, and, and if there were any other repairs, they would likely come from the same unbudgeted repairs.
It's coming from the fire fund.
Thank you.
And, and, and to be honest, the revenue goes into the general, the revenue from the sale goes into the general fund, we would likely use that money, though, to offset some of the other fire debt service, that would be part of our plan, that's how it factors into the whole balance sheet, when the Finance Commission puts together the funding for that new fire station in whatever period of time that is, right now, it's, it's the processes coming up with the design that is something that fits into that residential area, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
As a one direct question, Mr. Mother, can you speak a little bit to, to that fund balance and where that is, and how this is gonna impact that, that particular fund?
Sure, so with our fund balances that we have, that's just nothing that we have set for our contract or anything like that, it's just kind of hanging out there for, as, as the levies age, as we talked about with the levy that we did just recently, as the levies age, those balances kind of go down and down, but we did just pass this levy in, in May, so these funds are available for purchases like this.
And I guess, moving forward, that won't impact, like, the use of that levy, like, we won't have to ask for a levy sooner?
Correct. Right, our, our goal, as we said in the levy, was five years, but through the, some, some good penny pinching, it's closer to eight, so, and I think we'll still be on track.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just might comment that I, I think we've highlighted, I think, the multiple reasons that this makes sense, I'm particularly struck by Mr. Blair's comment that perhaps, he said 50% chance that somebody will tear down the, the building, I just don't think that's the case, insofar as, you know, fire stations are hot commodities for redevelopment, and you're also looking at a unique plot of land in which the building takes a large portion of it, such that I don't think anybody could build anything better or more, better suited for, for subsequent use, and I think we're just protecting the asset, especially given that it may be 2024 or 25, when the, the, the property would be sold, and it seems to me that it is an investment that you will get the return from, and it's kind of akin in my thinking to, when you sell your house and your real estate agent says you might wanna spruce up your kitchen, or do something different with that bathroom, you make that investment, and, and you, you do hope, and you normally do get it back in return, so that's sort of how I see it, and I'm, I'm expressing a favorable inclination towards approving it.
Anybody else want to address it? Okay, why don't you call the vote, then?
I read resolution for, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a proposal from Paramount Commercial Roofing for the roof replacement of Fire Station 63.
And this is as amended?
As amended.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair? Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Resolution 65 is approved by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. I believe the next item under resolutions is the 2022 Nature Works Grant application, Mr. Kennedy?
So the city has been very fortunate in the past, since 2015, to have secured four separate Nature Works Grants, all for improvements to Nissbit Park for right around $158,000, we're currently working on last year's project, which is the new gazebo, when we, Cory and I sat down and sort of, knowing that the nature... Um, when we, Cory and I sat down and sort of knowing that the Nature Works would be soon announcing the upcoming uh, uh, application uh, uh, program, we initially wanted to deviate. Um, we do well in the Nature Works projects because they are, um, the program is ran by O D and R and O D and R runs the bike trail. They see what we do down here as an amenity to the bike trail. So as long as we keep tying those kind of projects, we're being relatively successful. So we immediately had reached out with the thought of deviating away from Nisbit and going back to a plan for a new public restroom in the area of um, Sweetheart Lane. Uh, over um, over uh, here. Uh, Chief Huber and I have been talking about this for a while. Um, we would do a real simple lease with the Firefighters Association. And the whole Valentine's Ladies area would have a nice, simple uh, public restroom. The thought was, and I've already had already reached out to the bike clubs, knowing that they were way in on this because it would help with that movement towards the Linda Cox spot. Um, and I'd already gotten the cost proposal. I'd already reached out to some boat biking clubs who were gonna help us with some letters of support, which is big to this. Um, and um, but what didn't come out with that initial announcement was the allotments per county. Uh, Nature Works is ran by a certain amount of money for all ADA counties. Uh, Claremont's right around eighty-five, eighty-eight, ninety thousand. We thought, well, two hundred thousand dollar public restroom, almost fifty percent of it from grant. Yeah, this is a good project. City Public Works, we're already thinking Public Works could take care of the utilities. We were really running it through our head. Um, we're looking at what would fit the historic guidelines. And then they came out with the county allotment and we went, oh boy. It's not our question to ask why, but it was really low in the twenties. So we had a pivot. That's not enough funding to do a project like this. So we then pivoted relatively quickly, went back to what could we do in Nisbit that stays consistent with the master plan. And we thought, oh, what about the items that we had to pull away from the gazebo project because of the costs associated with that? And we thought, well, what's missing from that is right now the gazebo is somewhat a standalone outside of the ADA ramp. And how could we take the ramp, the path that is someday proposed to completely outline Nisbit Park, tie it into the boat, the bike trail, the Little Miami Bike Trail, and then continue right up to that line that we all, that I know I keep bugging everybody about, which is we can't go beyond because until the Harrison Widening Street, Harrison Street Widening Project is all of those storm drains are gonna be replaced throughout Nisbit. So we are not able to proceed with anything uh, west of where Carl, the imaginary line of Carl Brown going through Nisbit. So this plan would take that trail right up to it. So what we asked Cindy to do was come up with a cost that would go ahead and have us getting the total county allotment, add our twenty-five percent and make a project fit within those dollars. Meaning the city's not gonna have to pay anything up and above what they'd have to anyways. And the 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 ramp to the west would go right up to that line. So you'd never be replacing it. The ramp to the east would tie the gazebo into the bike trail and so on and so forth. So uh, that 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 is what this is. We have a total, um, again, it's all fits in the in the master plan. And it makes the gazebo much more functional, which will be installed in October. And um, so what we ended up with is a thirty-seven, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar project. We would be submitting a grant request of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. And the required twenty-five percent local match of the city would be nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four. Um, I always try to do up the ante a little bit on citizen participation. So I published a notice of intent to apply for funding and made sure everybody knew that we were discussing. It's a little different as a public hearing. I also attached city uh, engineers' cost proposal. And um, it's a pretty neat project. It really is. It's functional and it's part of the master plan. And if we get the Nisbit Park project funded, I'm sorry, if we get the Harrison Street Widening Project funded and Harrison Street is widened, there's new sidewalks on the south side and the turning radiuses off of Cardinal, off of Carl Brown are vastly improved. And Godzilla works its way across uh, Nisbit as all new storm, all of this area down here drains through Nisbit Park. All of the parking area here, all of that's replaced and upgraded. Then we would move forward with uh, funding for the amphitheater project, which is sort of that. I'd say the gazebo is the signature of the Nisbit Park project. The amphitheater is signature personified. Cory's already working with some people who that's what they do for a living is that they help cities fund the projects like this through naming rights and bringing in a lot of private funding. You know, the X Y Z, we wouldn't know how to sell the rights for the name. How would you sell the rights for the stage? How would you do bricks? We don't know how to do that. But there's firms that do that for cities. I knew Mason did that. So we've already reached out to a company like that. What a great way to fund the new amphitheater in Nisbit. So, but we're not there. We can't move until Harrison gets done. So we really are focused and I know Mayor Bailey's very focused on us not backing away from this bit. Just keep chugging away on that master plan. So that's why we picked this project. The applications are due um, Friday, but quite frankly, if you pass resolution, I'm proving it before I leave for vacation tomorrow and it's going in the mail. It's all completed. It just needs the legislation. So.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Kennedy, the uh, the blue line here I'm looking at.
Um, yeah, yeah, that's it.
The walkway, does that fit? It's gonna, I'm looking at the picture next to it of the master walkway here.
Yeah.
Those two things.
It's TBD, yeah.
Is that just kind of a general?
Yeah, it's gonna go around the expanded seating area. When I reached out to the Friends of the Little Miami State Park for a letter of support, which is a good one because they run, they take care of the bike trail. He said, David, do you think there'll be seating inside the gazebo? And we said, well, we're not really looking for seating inside the gazebo because we want that open look. We don't want the sitting on the railings. And I said, by the way, if you look at the picture, which if you look at this picture, all of that pink is this beautiful seating area. Um, and um, so that's why the gazebo itself isn't gonna have it. So that's just Cindy trying to get close. Uh, if you look at her cost estimate on page, packet page twenty-five, we we have um, to make the numbers work, she has um, project signage, which is only a hundred bucks and park furnishings is seventy-three ninety-six. So uh, we can use that. That's a little discretionary funding. Cause we really don't know what kind of accents we're gonna want on this concrete. We would think we're gonna match what we have downtown. We don't really know exactly what that's gonna cost. But by the time this project would be completed, the downtown streetscape plan would have already been done. And that set design that's going to be completed throughout the downtown district would continue. So instead of just concrete, this would include that. We call that soldering. Um, but so that's why I don't really see a whole lot of street furnishing things, but that's sort of Cindy's, that's where she catch all. So we have some extra money. So um, that blue line is just basically what she could do with a computer on a small thing. But the goal is that it would mirror that design of the trail along the eastern border of Nisbit.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, do you wanna read the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works grant application. The Nesbit Park gazebo connected.
Any comments or questions? I might just silence. I appreciate the the adaptability you had when the grant money wasn't what it was thought to be and what we were hoping to use it for. But this this seems like it's just a logical, good building block towards what we're.
I think that's the team that you have working for you. Cory, Cindy and I sit in a room and we just figure out a way to make it work. I mean, when we're gonna do a restroom, that was obvious. And I, you got, you got some great people that are working for you. So pivot, do it, move. And that's what we did. So it's going in the mail tomorrow. So I, Cory and Cindy here play a critical role in these decisions that we make like that. The underlying thing is stay true to the plan. Cause that was, that was a big deal.
Why don't we call the vote on the resolution then, please?
Mr. Blair?
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-six is adopted by a vote of sixty.
Um, Mr. Kennedy, I guess you're next as well on the uh, School Resource Officer.
Yeah, he's gonna get a break cause I'm gonna shut up. So um, uh, she's not here, but um, and for those of you who know, I have morning calls with Mayor Bailey every morning and she has had a growing concern about the safety of the students in the Loveland School District. And well, I've been asked multiple times by her, are we doing everything we can to keep the kids safe? Is there anything else we can do? Uh, it's fifty cents on the dollar. Why don't we figure out what, so um, based upon that um, Cory and I uh, were able to spend some time with the school superintendent. And the suggestion was made and very receptive on both sides that we looked at a school resource officer to the elementary school. And um, from there, it has been on rapid pace as far as cities go. And um, I attended the school board meeting last Thursday. And I can tell you that this is a, that the relationship between the city and the school is uh, very, very positive. So um, we do not have an SRO in the elementary. Uh, Fred Barnes, who retired from the city, X number of years ago, was down there. Um, Fred is no longer there. So this was the perfect fit. Um, we go fifty cents straight across the board. I mean, everything. Gas, everything. Um, so the school was extremely receptive where we just hired a new officer, Bobby Taylor. That typically the young officers aren't gonna be the SROs, but it paves the way. We're actually looking to hire additional officers. So just to, in a nutshell, this would auth, uh, legislation would authorize me to execute a memorandum of understanding with the school. The numbers I give to you in this proposal are simply guesswork. You don't know until you get that officer in there. What health plan is that officer in? What is that officer's rate? And then the school, we just modify it. So this will be the fourth SRO in a school, a city our size and one of the few communities that has an SRO in our parochial school, which to St. Columbas credit, their grant expired and they kept it going. If you recall, when I, when we did the SRO at St. Columban, I asked them that they would renew a three-year agreement with the city. That three years is gone and they just signed up again. That's very positive. That's how much they see a benefit to our officers. And I'm not quoting, um, I'm not wanna misquote Michael, my uh, Mr. Broadwater, because I think he's an incredibly good guy. But he said something at the um, he said something at the meeting that I thought was very appropriate at the school board meeting when he said that the school, the SROs in the school district, um, um, the the SROs become a fabric of the school district and build relations with the students and their families. Um, this, and what he said was is true. The school resource officers in Loveland are do more than keep the school safe. They participate in total building safety. They develop relationships with the kids, with their families. There's been numerous stories of them working with families after hours and helping them. So um, I I'm no expert on anything, but you know, cities and school districts across the country are grappling with this. And however they choose in their community to fix them is their thing. In our community, the SROs work. And um, so I I think this is a great uh, thing for the school. We'll have this wrapped up. Uh, it's in my draft email. It'll go to Mr. Broadwater tonight. Um, we'll have school su, we'll have an SRO hopefully ready to go by the start of school year. And this SRO will also sort of moonlight up at John, I always get that name wrong, up by Mr. Els, um,
L E C C?
L E C. Yes. So.
Any other comments, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I think this is, I, this is an absolutely huge decision from the city in order, in terms of keeping all our kids safe, but um, showing a true investment in in the in many like school districts don't have anything close to this. On Forest Hills, I believe they have one for the entire district. Um, you know, we have, we have three and now gonna be working with our kids and um, I actually, I actually wanna let Lieutenant Spock talk for a second because I think I've talked to um, Officer Moore, who was at the high school for years, and Officer Becker, who's been at L I S, L I M S last couple of years. And one of the things they talked to me about was how much um, it helps keep the community safe and large because they have their ear to the ground a little bit better. So I wanna give up Lieutenant Spock the chance to talk to that a little bit.
We've actually prevented a lot of crime in the city outside the schools because of the information that has been given to our SROs within the schools because of the trust factor that we have there. Families, current students, former students across the board. And that started with Fred Barnes and it extended out to Officer Becker, Officer Moore. And to Mr. Kennedy's uh, statement, Coach Steiny, as he is known, was previously the school resource officer of at St. Columban. He's been a football and a baseball coach for the past year and is now the school resource officer of the high school. And just the relationships he was able to forge, not even at the school where he was assigned, they were amazing. Uh, we already have one candidate. Can't the uh, application process close today? We have interviews Thursday, so we will know this Friday who the SRO will be for the fall. And it is actually a younger officer that put in for it.
It in, the timing is perfect. We have a new police chief starting August first. We have Bobby Taylor will be a new patrolman. We are working with another officer candidate who will be a graduate from the academy. And um, um, and and so we're, we're having a lot of new faces. I will, I know Cory will tell you that one of the, one of the standard questions throughout the interview process for the police chief was, what can you do to work with our younger officers? Cause we are a very young department, nothing against Mike, but we are a very, very young department. And um, we need to keep them. The allure to going to higher pay communities is always there. And um, having a new, this why I think Mike's, Michael, Mike, I believe, is what he likes to go by. I think Mike's got a lot on his shoulder. But boy, he's, he's ready to go. He's uh, talked to him on a regular basis. So be your August first.
Mr. Blair?
Uh, thank, thank you. Um, I am wild agreement with uh, Councilman Hart. Uh, I think uh, the SROs is one of the smartest things any city can do for its school district. Uh, I have a question and then an observation. Uh, my question is, I guess in Mr. Kennedy or or uh, Officer Spock, um, do we have SROs in every school building?
Uh, there would, there would not be an SRO at L E C C. But uh, based on my conversations with with the superintendent, Mr. Broadwater, this officer would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but the thought was that he will, he or she would make visits up there. Don't exactly know how the relationship would.
That's my understanding as well, but I can also tell you, Mr. Blair, that our officers are doing daily patrols in all of the schools, regardless if there's an SRO there or not.
I would, I would, I would support and suggest to my colleagues that we put an SRO in every school building in the district. I believe this school district would would step up to do their part. And but but, and I don't mean to cut you off, Officer Spock, but I'm, I'm speaking in wild support of the whole program. Secondly, um, Fred Barnes. Fred Barnes is a great SRO. He is, to me, the archetype of what an SRO ought to be. Um, I had occasion for a personal interaction with him that uh, where he went above and beyond and uh, if there was a, if there was a way we could name the position, you know, the Fred Barnes chair, I think the city and the, and the police department ought to do it because uh, uh, he should be, he should be the archetype of what an SRO ought to be.
Well stated. Mr. Ping?
Um, I, I just wanna make sure that I understand this correctly. We are talking about a brand new position, not a reassignment of an officer that we already have, correct?
Yeah, we created a new position. Um, Sue Manson, our safety director, lets it be known that this is up there and um, that this position is available. Um, and then the three principals at the elementary school then would, if there were multiple candidates, would go through the process of doing, selecting. Uh, this was actually, uh, Chief Ray had put this sort of selection process together. If there's only one, then that's sort of who you get. And then um, they, we want the school and maybe this is the reason why the SRO process is work. No officer's ever been forced on the school. Um, Vicki is now up at St. Columban, correct? And that was, they picked, and so. And that was, they picked, and so any modification to school, we, no, but no school's ever said, you're getting Officer Corey Wright. I don't know. You're getting Officer Corey Wright. No, they get nothing against Corey. I don't like to pick him. But I'm just saying, you get the point. That maybe that's why it works, they don't feel like they're being forced on somebody. So.
Well, I, I guess just in terms of the, the, the process, so that this is a, another officer, we're adding, the school will pay half, will pay half. And this officer will be permanently assigned to that spot. But he could be one of the officers that's already on duty. And then that person would be replaced with just a different officer that would be hired as a new hire. So, yeah, we're expanding. We had sixteen officers now and we're going to.
We were hiring two before the conversations regarding the SRO began. Typically then that would mean of the two, we're technically only hiring one and a half officers. Our thought is that we may be hiring three from the current civil service list. If not, and we do need additional personnel, we'll be going back and doing another testing. Right now, the testing's levels are extremely low for police officers. But we, if something suit, uh, Safety Director Mattson echoed to me that I heard from Chief Ray as literally to the point he left is, Dave, we don't have enough officers. And Sue echoed that immediately. That's why we were going with two from the current list. I will likely going to hire three from the current list. One who doesn't graduate until the end of August from the academy, who was a, a pick. I'd offered the position when I offered to Bobby off, Taylor, offered it to another officer who chose Milford. So.
Well, and, and that was the reason for my question as much as anything is, is just, i- it seems like that there's been a discussion of, um, shortness of, of staff in, in this. And so, uh, that's why I wanted to make sure I was seeing this correctly. They're adding someone, not pulling an officer away to put them in the school. Cause just because this is a good idea, doesn't mean pulling an officer away would be a, a good idea.
We're adding new bodies.
So we're adding, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, go ahead. I just said a, uh, oh, sorry, was it?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my bad. I thought you were, um, similar, so Mr. Ping's comments have sort of got me thinking a little bit about, um, to, so my understanding is that this is sort of a rotational assignment in many ways. No, this is a, when you get a, a hired as an SRO, that's like Mr. Ping said, it's a permanent assignment that you are going to be the SRO for that school. Is there like a contract or something? Or is it part of just terms of employment?
And as Mr. Hart, I, you can, I'm sure you can correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. With the MOU, you pet- create a position for an officer, maybe not a specific name. And then once that's thrown out, then we see who all applied. And in the case of St. Columban, we had two candidates. And then we have the interview process that includes some of the principals or the staff at that specific school. They have the majority of the say, because obviously they're gonna have to deal with that person on a daily basis. We have the final say for who actually goes in there. Uh, it is a permanent assignment for the term of the contract, usually three years for the MOU. But as Jesse Moore just did, you can leave that at the end of each school year. But as the supervisor of the SROs, I would tell them, you have a commitment for at least two years, if not three. And we try to get everybody to be able to fulfill that. So Officer Steiny, Steinke was up at St. Columban for three years. He's now at the high school. Jesse was over at the high school for three years. He's now one of our detectives.
Okay, thank you for, that was gonna be my follow-up question was sort of what, uh, what is the sort of internal mobility of, of those actual officers that, that are participating in the SRO program? So that, that's, I would imagine that it's a prestigious, not a prestigious assignment, but a, an important assignment. As I think we're seeing here in our, our enthusiasm for this role.
I'll be honest, I think it's the most important officer level assignment that we can have in the entire department. There's some, there's some agencies across the nation that choose to make the officers, they don't want to be seen in the schools. And to me, the level of integrity and the corporate ownership that the schools take of that person means you have to have the right person in there, both on their side and on the school side, which is why we take that so seriously.
And then, then like in turn, you're developing, uh, you're continuing to develop high character people within the department that can better serve the agency going forward, whether as an SRO in different dis- or different buildings in different contexts. But also, uh, you know, ra- raising the level of, uh,
Absolutely.
of the whole staff.
And their skillset that they then pass on everyone else.
Correct. Well, I, I, again, I'll just wrap my comments up by saying, I think this is a, a, a prudent move, uh, an important move that the, the city and the school can do in partnership.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I just wanna highlight one more thing here before, before we wrap up my comments. Um, our officers that work in schools also do duties outside along with summers. So it's not like a teacher position that would be like a hundred eighty-five days. It's, they, they are still active police officers. They get pulled up to the schools at times to, to handle like urgent matters and things. So, um, uh, if you wanna add anything to that, please, please feel free. But I just wanna highlight that this is, this police officer is not just a, a seven to three at the school, done for the day, done for the year type.
And truly is a leadership role. Most of our F T, our school resource officers have been field training officers. They go on to become supervisors or other leadership type roles within our agency. Or as with Steinke, as a coach outside of the schools.
I guess my only question for Mr. Medler would be the financial aspect of it. Um, I, I assume, uh, there's designated or undesignated funds perhaps for twenty-two. But in twenty twenty-three, will it be fully funded, I assume?
Well, this is all from the general fund. So, Jonathan has been pretty healthy lately. And if the board makes this a priority, there is space for it.
Yeah, Mr. Ori?
Yep, just a couple of comments, uh, to Mr. Blair's comment about having a SRO in each school. Um, L E C C is, uh, with quarter mile away from St. Columban. So the resource officers, a resource officers, pretty close. Uh, it's not the same as being there, but preschoolers and kindergartners usually don't carry guns. So, or that kind of stuff, but you never know, you know? But then just.
That's the entire point.
Yeah, I know.
And I know you know that.
Yeah. But the other thing I, I wanted to just address is that these SROs are more than just police officers in the schools. They, they really get to know the kids. And John alluded to that. And they really work hard to, to make the, the police officers, um, in a different light than what we see them on TV. They really work hard at it.
It's unfortunate that schools have become one of the most vulnerable places for, um, harm to our children. So I think this is an important step to eliminate that. Uh, do you wanna read the resolution or?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding to provide a law enforcement officer to serve as a school resource officer for the Loveland City School District's elementary school.
Any further discussion? Wanna call the role then?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven is adopted by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, um, is there a, uh, first reading of an ordinance or do we, do we need to do that?
Well, there, yeah, for that easement.
Okay.
Ordinance authorizing the city manager to grant an easement to Duke Energy Ohio Inc.
All right, that's our first reading. It'll be, uh, on the agenda for next meeting. Um, any city manager and staff reports? Okay, there's one in your packet from building and zoning. Um, committee meeting and reports are also attached for planning and zoning in May and June. Any comments or questions about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Blair?
Yeah, a comment under council reports or comments?
Go right ahead.
All right, and recently, um, I think it was the, uh, the recreation committee, uh, minutes spoke of, uh, some fairly substantial vandalism that occurred in, uh, Hidden Creek Park. And I want, I would like to propose that the city look into, um, working with that organization to, uh, install trail cams in that park, uh, to help with security so that we can cut potential risk, uh, future vandalism down. I would also suggest that we think about, uh, posting trail cams of some sort or another, um, in, uh, Nisbet Park. Just a suggestion.
Mr. Ori?
Um, just kinda trailing with, uh, Mr. Blair said, uh, he and I went, uh, fishing, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And we went down to, uh, uh, Betty Ray Drive at the end there. And the trail that cuts down to the river by the, um, the dog training area. Uh, at the end of that day is, there's probably two fifty-five gallon Trump barrels of trash down there.
Oh, okay.
Unbelievable. So, might be a cleanup and a trail camera down there too.
Yeah, Scott, Scott Wisby loves it when I send him emails from council meetings.
Yeah, I, I couldn't believe how much trash, you know, was down there.
That's a pretty messy area too. That's, I remember my neighbor, uh, Joe Timmerman did a cleanup a couple of years ago. That same exact spot and
Unbelievable.
yielded just, you know, truckloads of trash bags.
If I had, if I had a bag, I would have picked it up, but it wouldn't have been.
It's a, it's a beautiful area on a, on a Saturday morning when you sit there fishing. It's a beautiful area. We should maintain it. You're talking Betty Ray, right?
Mm-hmm, yep. And David, it's the trail that's between the, the soccer fields and dog training.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Um, I can highlight a couple, two or three upcoming events, uh, here in the city. Trihealth Mobile Memography Van is coming to Loveland on July nineteenth. Uh, it'll be outside city hall from nine AM to three PM. The, uh, final concert in Little Miami River Chamber Alliance's third Thursday Concert Series will be held on July twenty-one. Uh, at Hometown Cafe, right off the trail there, and will feature Pandora Effect. Finally, uh, the city's Movie in the Park series kicks off with the movie The Sandlot on July twenty-third in Phillips Park. Pre-show activities begin at seven, movie beginning at nine PM. All ages are welcome and admission is free. Thank you to P R S Insurance for sponsoring this summer's Movie in the Park series. And the only other thing I would add is another great Fourth of July celebration down here in Loveland.
Yeah.
Well, and a lot of people complimented that fireworks.
Great fireworks.
Yeah. Thank you, Misty, for all you did on that.
Had a, a great team that helps out with that.
Loudest group that ever meets in city hall.
Anything else? Otherwise I'll indicate a mo- move, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's call it all then.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Here is six to zero.
Thank you.